I have six.
Call the Noble County Board of Zoning, Appeals, Special Assessment Meeting, September seventeenth, to order. First, we're going to do the collective legions.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sarah, could you please take the roll?
Jeff Boyle.
Here.
Patty Gatman.
Here.
Michael Klaufenstein.
Here.
Mary Warman.
Here.
Tom Griffiths.
Here.
Uh, we, we do have a quorum. Um, next, uh, does anybody want to approve the agenda as it is written? I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion from Patty and a second, and a second from Jeff.
Mary and Jeff.
Okay, well, Mary and Jeff. If they would follow. Motion has been properly moved and seconded. We, all those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Quorum has been accepted. Um, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through the procedure, but in the interest of time, I'm going to shorten it for the remonstrance. I assume that you all here are in favor, correct? So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna go start with Teresa's staff report, and that's gonna be followed by comic cards and whoever makes the checklist. So I will read these, and we're going to probably do them together, and what's going to be an exception will go first.
Oh, special exception would be first.
Okay, so special exception, five ninety-four, Colin Mullins and Eric Mullins, according to the County Development Ordinance, Article two point oh nine and five point oh four, request a special exception to allow an accessory dwelling in our E zoning district. Real estate is located in Section twenty-one, Green Township, Quadrant three hundred, Parcel zero one five, Lot one of Mullins Compound, common location known as twenty forty-five East four hundred South, fifty-seventh Sherbusco, Indiana. Um, you guys, uh, do have twenty minutes, but we're gonna start with Teresa's staff report.
So, um, regarding the special exception, if you look at the general area, I've got some images. Well, there's the site plan for the location of the new structure, um, and the drawing, rough drawing of what that's gonna look like, sixteen hundred square feet. That part of it will be a variance. There's the outside visual. You have your real estate development standards. Uh, staff will note that, um, a primary dwelling in the RE zoning district is twelve hundred square feet minimally. Maximum structure height, structure height is thirty-five feet, with the accessory being twenty-five from the, uh, side property line for the development setback. The accessory dwelling, if it's permitted by special exception, the minimum dwelling size is five hundred fifty square feet with a maximum of twelve hundred square feet, with a shared driveway, utilities, and septic are where practical. Um, and that where practical in those two situations specifically, in my opinion regarding the septic, the original home was installed probably not intending to have a second home on it, so it probably doesn't have the capacity to add another one to it. This is also the variance location. Um, these are your practical difficulty standards, your accessory dwelling standards, and I've highlighted the areas that I felt pertain to this application, um, based on the U D O. I'll go through those here real quickly in a second. Let's go back to the next picture. These are some visual site distance. They've got a nice layout already prepared for the home site. Um, I did move the sign. It was not in a good location. Um, we ended up having to put a stake in the ground to get it there. No, it was just, it's just, we want it closer to the road, and I even tried putting that.
It was hard.
Yeah, so I got a stake out of the car, and we threw it in with the stake. Um, this is the-
Question, Teresa, go back to the-
Yep.
The line up that says primary dwelling.
I'm showing you. Next slide. It's hidden. See it? I was getting there. Um, so the accessory dwelling, or the primary dwelling is bound, backed down. So as you look, as you come onto the property, as you're driving in, you might be able to see it. Once you get up onto that height just a little bit, you can see the cap of the garage. But for the most part, they're gonna look like they're two separate parcels, two separate areas. Again, whoever did your groundwork did a nice job. That looks nice and ready to go. Um, I will point out a couple of concerns that I had on site. Um, this is just to bring some things to your attention, is that there are some excessive outdoor storage. Um, the burning is prohibited in Noble County unless it's like leaves and grass and limbs. So if that's intended for that, don't get caught by item. Um, so, there you go. Um, did you break something? Well, those cords don't help. So there you go. So basically, the special exception, staff found no issues with the special exception. Um, and if members find a practical difficulties, uh, staff would support that decision. Do you want, uh, comment cards?
Yes, please.
Um, as far as tech review goes, um, regarding the legal description, there was no issues for the G I S. Highway Department, no comment. Surveyor, no comment. Building Department had no comment. Health Department, no comment. Auditor noted that the names on everything looked appropriate, and building, or Plan Commission member Glenn Lemon had no comment. Um, we had a rezoning. This is the rezoning application. Wrong individual. Disregard those comments. I pulled them out of file. Wrong one. For this parcel, again, no comments from any of the tech review, and for John and Deborah Hicks, no comment. For the development variance, again, no comments, and the response card came back from, is it Jaclyn Keener and Landon Keener, also no comment.
Okay. Now, this Teresa's-
That's it.
And I got mine and, well, wait, second, Patty. Patty, you go first.
Um, I went out there today, um, and as Teresa said, figured really nice groundwork where we had to put it, looks really nice. Um, it is hard to see the main home until you get up on top and look down, because I was like, where's the rest of it? But the home down below is really beautiful. Um, and it looks like they've got a good plan in place, if one I could tell one I saw.
Now, I would just confirm with exactly what Patty said. Just, you don't see the primary dwelling place as you pull the driveway.
And I'll go back a little bit to my staff report, and, and actually, it's kind of also encouraging them to, to think about the future. If this is developed appropriately, it has an option to be subdivided. There's enough acreage there to cut that off into two. That comment also goes along with my development standard variance, that there is an option of having that larger square footage if it was on its own lot.
Didn't we have to already go through a Plan Commission for subdivision?
Yeah, but it's four acres.
Okay, all right.
They can vacate and replat.
Okay. Hang on, hang on.
They'll get to you.
Sorry.
Anything else?
No, I'll stop.
Okay, um, you guys will have twenty minutes, um, to figure your case. Uh, questions by us or the staff will come against you. You, you are good to go.
Name's in the address.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ashley, where are the, um, two zero four five East four hundred South? Um, so I know you guys had a concern with the, um, splitting, if they would ever need to be split in, um, in the future. I, you're aware of what you could do, if I want to come up and-
You can present that to the record. I'll take it and share it.
To do the two acres. This is just a rough drawing, like if it were ever needed to be done that way.
Can you kind of tell your story from building a big house to doing a little house?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, originally, the two properties, it was one big property. We went to that one, that might forever, I think it was last year or so. Um, and we built both, and the property on the east side was supposed to be for Eric. Um, and our friend's house ended up running down. Eventually, we're gonna get to the transfer of selling it. But, um, to keep the property where we can all share and use it, and also keep Eric nearby, um, by doing the smaller accessory line up front, then we can keep him close, and he can live up on the same property as us.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you, instead of going through a special exception process and a variance, why don't you just subdivide again?
Well, a special exception allows them to get started. If and when they subdivide, or if you approve the variance, they don't need to subdivide at this time. They could do it in the future. The special exception does allow them to get started, and I think that's a big hurry for you. They're ready to get dirt going, or get, uh, concrete in.
I thought I was told that we split the property in half one time already, we couldn't do it again.
Not under that process.
I guess I-
You need a major subdivision to go again, which you can, you can do it.
We did the major subdivision that time.
Then you can still do another major.
Okay.
I didn't think that was my part of it.
Yeah.
It couldn't be minor because it'd already been split just previously.
Yep. Yep. As long as they don't mess with that outer boundary, they internally subdivide. It's a vacate and replat. No, they got over four hundred feet, right there. Four hundred seventeen point four three feet. No, the other lot has two hundred and fifty feet.
Are they just gonna share the same septic? No, everything's a new septic. New well, new septic, everything.
And since we're asking questions, I'll pull over to that section of the, um, area of the accessory dwelling standards. They do need to share the driveway. The board's been very, um, much approving that. This one is laid out with that intention. When it comes to the utilities, um, under F five, it should use the same connections. Where it's practical, but it says should, not shall. Shall is more mandatory in the ordinance versus should. So, the-
And where the pudding is, if that's not practical.
No, no.
So, I guess Jeff and I's got questions. Your, your name again was?
Ashley.
Last name?
Murphy.
Murphy. And you're Eric Mullins. Relationship, I mean.
Colin is my fiance. He'll be mine, uh, forever.
I was my son.
Okay.
My son and my daughter-in-law.
Yes.
They're all related.
Okay, well, I figured that. I just-
Colin's the strong sound guy.
Me and Jeff were sitting here. I know both of us had questions. And the accessory, this, what, what we're talking about tonight is going to be yours. Correct, correct? Yep. Okay. Board seems to be fairly silent.
Can I ask to maybe focus on the practical difficulty, because for me, that was the one that I was struggling with? For the variance.
Which was? Well, we're just working on the special exception currently.
Oh, well, a lot of times you kind of do both at the same, yeah. But yes.
We, we can.
I'm sorry.
I would rather move forward with the special exception and then address the variance.
Okay.
So, and that will make it simpler for the board as well.
Yep.
We're focused on the special exception. You guys seem to be silent.
Well, my, my question on the whole thing is, I, I deal with this all the time within the city of Lake Erie, and in the past, there've been properties where we have allowed special exceptions for things, and then the very next year or two rolls around, and all of a sudden, we want to separate this off, and, um, I had one today where there's two houses connected, and they were never gonna break it off, and all of a sudden now, we want to break it off. I think it would be cleaner if we just do that at the beginning, instead of doing it down the road if it happens. There are too many times where families don't get along, and it turns into a bloodbath, and I would rather see that bloodbath taken care of beforehand. That's my opinion.
And, um, I'm just gonna comment on what Jeff said. I ain't agree with Jeff completely, however, most of the time, they don't tell us that. These guys have already been honest with us. They said it probably will be subdivided. They've already got an idea how to do it. And as Teresa said, just gives them a way to-
It, it lessens their window. They can get started quicker. A survey is gonna be a lot longer.
Subdivide at this point. The reason why we want these properties is we wanted something that's completely paid for, and we have a big line of credit. Because we want to borrow against this property as our stable home, you know what I mean, to go build other properties to sell in the future here. So this is gonna be our home base, and we plan on staying there for quite some time, as of right now. But you are correct, things do change. Never is a big word, you know? So.
And there is plenty of acreage, if you think that they have to.
The special exception just allows them to get started on their project.
Correct. The special exception allows for a second home on that property, and that home is, meets those qualifications. Now, we have a variance that we consider here in a minute to lessen those qualifications. So if you're in favor of having a second home on that parcel, that's the first conversation.
We can discuss it all you want, but if they need the standards of a special exception, I mean, if we have to.
Yeah, that's-
So, if there's no other questions on the special exception, I would entertain a motion to move on to the findings of fact.
I propose that we move on to the findings of fact, or?
Uh, five ninety-four.
Um, special exception, applicant.
I have a motion from Mary. Do I have a second?
Last second.
The second from Patty. Motion has been properly moved to the second. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All of us, I'm pleased to respond by saying aye. Aye. Teresa, we are ready.
Special exception findings of fact, applicant is Colin Mullins in care of Eric Mullins. Special exception number is five ninety-four, with the physical location of twenty forty-five East four hundred South in Sherbusco. The Noble County Board of Zoning Appeals, having heard the application for the special exception, and all testimonies from parties claiming to be adversely affected by the proposed special exception, does now enter the following findings as required by the Unified Development Ordinance and Indiana Code. Your comment will be to agree or disagree. Number one, the proposed special exception is consistent with the purpose of the zoning district in the Noble County Comprehensive, and the Noble County Comprehensive Plan. Jeff Boyle.
Agreed.
Michael Klaufenstein. Mary Warman.
Agree.
Patty Gatman.
Agreed.
And Tom Griffiths.
Agreed.
The proposed special exception will not be injurious to the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community. Mary Warman.
Agree.
Michael Klaufenstein. Patty Gatman. Jeff Boyle.
Agreed.
Tom Griffiths.
Agreed.
The proposed special exception is in harmony with all adjacent land uses. Patty Gatman. Uh, Jeff Boyle.
Agreed.
Michael Klaufenstein. Mary Warman.
I agree.
Tom Griffiths.
Agreed.
The proposed special exception will not alter the character of the district. Mary Warman.
I agree.
Michael Klaufenstein. Jeff Boyle.
Agreed.
Patty Gatman. Tom Griffiths.
Agreed.
The proposed special exception will not substantially impact value in an adverse manner. Uh, Michael Klaufenstein. Patty Gatman. Jeff Boyle. Mary Warman. Tom Griffiths. Based on the findings, the board does approve the special exception.
Okay, as Teresa's doing that, I will move into the variance. Variants twenty-three eighty-one, Colin Mullins and Eric Mullins, in accordance with the Unified Development Ordinance, Article five point oh four, request the development standards variance to exceed U D O maximum size for accessory dwelling, which is twelve hundred feet, to be at sixteen hundred square feet, and for the accessory dwelling to utilize a separate septic system. Real estate is located in Section twenty-one, Green Township, Quadrant three hundred, Parcel fifteen, Lot one of Mullins Compound. Common location is twenty forty-five East four hundred South, fifty-seven Sherbusco, Indiana. You guys again have twenty minutes for this, if you would like. Why, uh, first, I'm, go ahead.
I have pictures. If you guys want, I did thirty round things.
Um, if you do, you sack, you give them up.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, you're good. Uh, there's seven here. She knows how to do it.
Okay, first question I'm going to ask is-
Are they all the same?
Is. How many square feet is the primary dwelling?
Twenty four. What, twenty-four hundred square foot or twelve hundred square foot? Finish it up.
So Teresa, they say their primary dwelling is twenty-four hundred square feet.
The application was applied for at sixteen hundred. The primary or the accessory dwelling?
Oh, I said the primary.
He may have, but we're talking-
The accessory dwelling is sixteen hundred square feet.
So that's the one that's-
But the minimum is twelve in our ordinance, so they're requesting to be over the twelve hundred.
Yes.
It's twelve.
In those photos I put in, like furniture and stuff, they use some size reference of what it is.
You guys gotta give her credit. We've done three or four houses like this now, trying to get up to this point to where we're getting one house paid for and everything, and, uh, she's got really good computer on the three D imaging and-
And they are fun, yeah, yeah. So you guys can see, like, sizing wise and why we were requesting the sixteen hundred, um, of this space. And your sixteen hundred is not in case of an offer.
Correct. That's just finished house.
What's the, uh, what's the big room with nothing yet?
That's just like a shop area. We just put this foot long.
Are you talking about in the bathroom areas?
No. Next to the, next to the cars.
Yep, that's just, it's just shops and then just an area for garage.
But that's considered part of the square footage, correct?
Nope.
Yep, that's-
Living area.
Okay.
So if he's got a tool shop on part of it, that's not.
And let's take away from each other. What was your practical difficulty, Teresa, with the variance?
I, I, I'm not sure one's been met for increasing the square footage. The septic, I had no problem with. I mean, the septic, in my opinion, according to U D O, was not necessary to request the separate septic.
So these guys is looking at pictures, an accessory dwelling, you talk about septic, you can-
No, the, the application also requires that the septic system be separate, and that, according to our ord- ordinance, I believe it's fine. The only thing that I don't think, um, we need, we need more of a practical difficulty, or at least maybe explain better what the practical difficulty is, twelve hundred square feet versus sixteen hundred square feet.
Okay, questions by the board?
That is my big question. Um, you can allow for extra room for grandkids to live with. I'm a grandparent, and I don't want the small, space too small.
Right, absolutely.
But it's not a practical difficulty.
Okay, um, this is intended to be like the mother-in-law suite in the end, if it needed to be, you know what I mean? But I had just turned forty-seven yesterday, as a matter of fact, so I'm not quite to the mother-in-law suite status, you know what I mean? So I, I do want to have the option of living here for forty years, you know what I mean? God willing, I can see my grandkids raised and everything else, you know? So, a twelve hundred square foot is, is great for a mother-in-law suite, but I'm, I'm planning on getting there a little bit longer. So it would be nice to have a little bit bigger square footage.
I agree.
Yeah.
But it's still not a practical difficulty. To qualify as an accessory dwelling, it has to meet certain standards, and increasing by four hundred square feet, and that's bigger than my garage, there needs to be a practical difficulty for the reason that you would do it.
I do have, I do have the definition on the screen, if that helps.
For what? The, this practical difficulty?
Yes.
Yeah. That's, that's my only problem with it. I think it's a great layout. It's a great plan, but that's my only, my only issue with the application. Is that there's not a real practical difficulty for the actual one.
I'm going to echo Mary. Nothing personal against you guys, but we, we do have issues in the county with accessory structures, not meeting either the minimums or the maximums. I, as you got in a practical difficulty, and I'm not wanting to set precedence for the, how graphic that we do have issues with. I almost-
Can I offer a nugget? For the owner? In theory, the special exception is approved, you can put a second home there. If the variance doesn't get approved, you can still build your home at twelve hundred square feet, eventually subdivide, make it as large as you want. That could be a future thing to do.
Yeah, but to-
Granted, it does increase your cost. It does increase your cost. I get that.
It wouldn't be-
The subdivision process would allow you to do that. It would allow you to build it however you want. Unfortunately, we have, we, we have strict guidelines, but we're supposed to-
What is the, I can't read that there. What is the definition?
Um, a difficulty with regard to one's ability to improve land stemming from regulations. Um, it's not, in practical difficulty, it's not a hardship. It's basically saying, like, um, for example, a person may request a variance for our, um, a side yard setback due to a tree being in the way or blocking its location. Like, say, you need, your minimum's twenty-five feet, but you need to be at twenty feet instead, because of a tree.
Pretty good.
If we ever have an opening. She's picking it up. So, i- if you have a minute, maybe you could let them see if they can, I mean-
Or, or, or another asset, if it was a family, you know, it was a large family with eight children, this is why you need to build a larger facility, more than twelve hundred square feet. That would be the practical difficulty. To my understanding, to my thinking.
That would, that would probably be a fair.
As, as a general rule-
Needs to be successful for all rooms. That increases the square footage.
What, what they're working on?
Uh, as a general rule, practical difficulty has to be inherent in the land, not in your plans. And where, so you gotta show there's something about the topography, uh, trees. One example, but that would have to be an immovable tree. A piece of granite would be a, a good example.
Not the one that we saw.
Yeah, yeah, a boulder, but you can't move, you know, you, you know, that's, that's the thing. Actually, the state's definition is stricter than ours, and I don't think there's any litigation since I'm under remonstrators, but if you're gonna take in front of a court, it'd be difficult, because under the state standards, you have to show that there's some economic harm that would be caused if the ordinance is enforced. In other words, if they follow the procedures and have the four hundred lesser square feet, is there going to be severe economic effect? Is there, was that effect self-created? And this is where you usually run into a problem. And the last thing is, is whether, uh, do they have other feasible alternatives to what it is that they're requesting?
Guys, I'm just gonna tell you, um, I, I think I'm speaking to the board. We want to pass this, but I don't think we can because of that question. Um, Teresa has offered some suggestions, and there's the subdivision process.
So, they go through the subdivision process, and they're sharing the same driveway.
So what we could do, let's just say that that does come about. Um, they could still share the driveway since they both still own it, but as long as the new lot has its own road front, they have plenty of room. In the future, if that next owner wanted to have their own driveway, they could. So they can't get along. Um, as long as they could get a highway permit, they could put their own driveway out. Or in some cases, the board might say, hey, just that first fifty feet or whatever needs to have a shared easement, so we know who's paying to keep it maintained in the future.
So when, we ended up selling my house, um, I wasn't really planning on it. My friend's house burned down, and, uh, he has two kids in school. They were on the same school bus at my, at my property, so I moved into my permanent lot, my campground, and let my friends move into that house. Then ended up letting them buy the house, but they had nowhere else to go. So meanwhile, I was gonna go be another one by, you know, but I must run out of time before, so I, I pretty much got that land paid for already, so we're trying to give you a place as soon as possible, you know what I mean? So I don't have too many other options, go buy from our parcel and start this whole process over before getting into a winner. So we were kind of like stuck with what we had left, you know what I mean?
We can, we can offer you a variance and approve the variance for the twelve hundred square foot, for you to start that process, such as what Teresa said. You, we can put a commitment on you that we will approve your variance for twelve hundred square foot. Then you can do what Teresa said, and you can start doing what you need to do. You just need to know that you, at some point, you can add on if you would like.
If it's subdivided.
We, we can grant that. Yes, well, yes, to get subdivided, thank you. You did, did I confuse you?
No. If, uh, if we do subdivide, how long does that process take? If, uh, if we do subdivide, how long does that process take to get done?
Say that again, I didn't hear.
Uh, yeah, they wanna know how long that process would be.
Yeah, your longest timeframe and your biggest cost is gonna hire a surveyor.
Yeah.
Once they have that survey work done, once it's in our office, by law, it has to be there for thirty days. And then we put you on a meeting as quickly as we can. It depends on the, 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 if it can go to plan committee, we do those twice a month. If it can go to plan commission, we do those once a month. But you still have that window by law that it has to be in our office.
I had a question. I'm trying to figure out your picture floor plan versus the handwritten floor plan. I can't find the square footage. So when I added up the square footage that was on here, it's twelve point four. I don't know what the other square footage, or what it is, like maybe it's this, but I don't. I was just trying to figure out where your square footage was. And I thought maybe it's this roof, but I don't.
If I can look it up.
This is square footage for primary.
Twenty-four hundred square feet. But it has to be under twelve according to our ordinance. Either way, it can't be any bigger than twelve.
So I guess my one question is, I guess, now this is forty foot from the outside of the wall to the outside of the house, you know what I mean? But these are gonna be six by six inside bar posts, you know what I mean? So we're gonna have eight now, or, oh, five, gonna have seven inches of wall on each side, plus interior wall. So the finished square foot on the inside will not be sixteen hundred, I mean. But I don't know how you guys do your square footage.
Outside, I believe.
Yeah, we had a definition.
I know realtors that come in, they only do the inside, you know what I mean? So I guess that's why we're asking.
No, I think that's the wrong print. I think that's the thirty by fifty-two print that, you know, this is not square foot. This is not the right print though. This is the thirty by thirty-two by forty or something like that. That's a wrong print. That was one of the first that we, we drew up. I'm sorry.
As long as we have the sixteen hundred right, that's what mattered for our ordinance.
I would. I would entertain a motion for variance twenty-three eighty-one with a commitment.
Well, can I be real frank with you? The only thing that they're varying from on the ordinance here is the twelve hundred square feet. In my opinion, the septic isn't necessary, but you should acknowledge it since it's on the application. If you approve of the septic, but deny, let me think that through. You're gonna have, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to go that route because.
Approving this variance except for the sixteen hundred square foot.
Correct. In theory, the septic isn't necessary, but if you do it based on the application, yes, you're correct. I'm wrong. Yes.
Yes, it's, you still got time.
Is there a way to, if, if we could do like the sixteen, if we could get approved for the sixteen hundred in a grant, that we have this many days to do the separations of the property? Just so we can.
We can guarantee that. That's tough.
Like to.
That's tough, cause surveyors sometimes will tell you three months and they'll be seven or eight months. Before we see, usually two years. Yeah, there, I, I, I think you're putting yourself in a position for a zoning violation with that one. That could put you in the, in the backseat on it, if that makes sense.
Okay, I am ready. Do you guys have anything else? Okay. I have, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion with any commitments for variance twenty-three eighty-one. I have a motion from Patty. Any commitments with that? Okay, I have a motion from Patty. Do I have a second? I have a second. My motion has been properly moved to the second. Is there any further discussion? Since I'm checked, can I have any further discussion? Can I discuss it?
I don't know.
Let's see what I know.
I think as long as it's before the vote, you're good.
Why didn't we not give them a? Uh, a commitment on the twelve hundred square foot, Patty, Mary?
Let me ask you this. In theory, and I, if ever can pay attention to what I'm gonna ask. The accessory dwelling standards, if they're denied as a whole, and staff feels like the septic that is added to this application is a, a use that is not necessarily needed to have been applied for, and they come to get a building permit for a twelve hundred square foot structure, would that hinder them since this variance was denied?
Why would it?
I don't know why it would.
I don't think they, I don't feel like the septic should have been on the application is what I'm saying. Because I think where it's located and it says where it's practical, I didn't think it was necessary. So if the board, let's say in theory denies the entire application for twelve hundred square feet and the fact that they have their separate septic, that would shut their whole process down.
But we get denied for twelve hundred.
I'm just, I'm doing a hypothetical.
And I'm not following. I mean, is septic required or it isn't required?
According to the ordinance, it's where practical.
It seems like to me though, this would be practical.
This is practical because the distance between the two houses.
That's where I'm saying is to me, it didn't need to be part of the application. It's not necessary.
Much higher elevation than the other house.
Correct. And in most cases, that other house is already built for the amount of bedrooms it has, not intending for another one to come in. So my question is, is since it's on the application, in theory, in a hypothetical world, if the board denies this entire application, they come in for a building permit. Can I move forward using number five out of the ordinance? Because it is, even though it was denied here, I could say as a planner, that does meet the standards of the ordinance. Twelve hundred square feet and the fact that he can have his own septic.
I mean, at least initially, you determine whether it's in compliance. So if you're deciding whether or not it's if applicable or not if applicable, that's when discretion is.
Well, my discretion's coming from the fact that the board's gonna turn around and potentially deny something that I may have to turn around and say, oh, I'm gonna disapprove of their denial.
You can't worry about what might happen in the future. You gotta do it based on what's right there on the ground at the time. Because plans change.
Okay.
We changed two members of the board and everything's changed.
Yeah, that's true. Yes, he does.
That's why you need a, any, that's why written commitments are useful, because if two members of the board change, it doesn't matter what we say.
Okay. Is if, if that is, if that is an option for members to verbalize so that it's on record, that backs up my thought process for the application for a building permit. That would defend that.
Okay, um, I do have a motion from Patty and a second from Mary. Uh, my answer for the discussion, that was me. Is there any, any further discussion?
So we don't know if you're following as far as, you.
Application as presented.
And Jeff and both know, and we can, no, we can't because it.
You have not approved that motion yet, so you can deny the motion and then create a new one.
Yes.
Yeah, I've spent, or you can do, I'm not really a strong parliamentary procedure.
We got a motion, we got first and second.
Can withdraw.
Yes, as long as, yes.
But it's if their response is that they would like to move forward with the twelve hundred square foot. Or accessory dwelling.
That's irrelevant at this point.
We would pass that, but.
So I've got a motion.
Either way, they can have a twelve hundred square feet.
And then I'm gonna have further discussion and over with, not really. I can, I can always in favor say aye. If we say no, then we can move on with a separate motion.
No, no matter what, they can build a twelve hundred square foot home. They've had an approval for a special exception. They're asking right now for sixteen hundred square feet.
So it doesn't make any difference. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing that all who is in favor respond by saying aye.
We're moving on to findings of fact.
Yes.
Okay. Development standards variance findings of fact for Colin Mullins in care of Eric Mullins. Variance number is twenty-three eighty-one. Physical address is twenty forty-five east four hundred south in Cherabusco. The Noble County Board of Zoning Appeals, having heard the application for the variance described, and all testimonies from parties claiming to be adversely affected by the proposed variance, does now enter the following findings as required by the Unified Development Ordinance and Indiana Code. Comment will be to agree or disagree. The approval of the variance will not be injurious to the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community. I will remind you, if you have a disagree comment, um, refer to the ordinance as a reason why. Uh, Mary Worman. Michael Klaufenstein. Jeff Boyle. Patty Gatman. Tom Griffiths. The use and value of the area adjacent to the property included in the variance will not be affected in a substantially adverse manner. Patty Gatman. Jeff Boyle. Michael Klaufenstein. Mary Worman. Tom Griffiths. The strict applications of the terms of the ordinance will result in practical difficulties in the use of the property. Mary Worman.
I disagree. The definition of a practical difficulty is not limits.
Michael Klaufenstein. Patty Gatman. You disagree with the motion, but you're agreeing with Mary's comment. Gotcha. Jeff Boyle.
I disagree with the same reasons.
As.
As Mary.
Okay, Tom Griffiths.
And I disagree for the same reasons.
Okay, based on the findings, the board denies the application for the variance.
But as Teresa's told, you guys can.
You know, four hundred square foot go on.
And you are welcome to come in tomorrow if it works to get your building permit. I'll mail these. Do you want some of these back? I only need one for the record.
Uh, no.
You have a year to make that decision. I just need to have, um. It has to be substantially complete within a year for the, um, special exception. So you'll need a building permit within a reasonable time to have it substantially up, so walls up, framing up. You're welcome. Okay. I only need one for the record and I have two, so you may do with those what you wish. One of the, um, since we got a couple more minutes here to find. Last meeting, we talked about, um, the improvement or improvement location permits for home-based businesses. We sent out about forty-eight, um, letters to people that had home-based businesses. We all, got all back, but about thirteen. So I told Rachel today, I said, let's send those out one more time and make it a little more stern that they have to fill this out. So, um, we now have some tracking mechanisms in place. Terry has also helped by creating a, um, home-based business only application. Instead of us doing it, some of it was going through the building department. We had to kind of share an application with them. So again, we'll have more avenues of having that kind of separated and a little more off. At this point, we went through the twenty-eight that we had, the three of us sat down one morning for about an hour. And we each went through the criteria to see if we found anything that could have potentially been a hiccup. Some of them are gonna require a drive-by and maybe a couple more questions. But for the most part, people at least responded that it appears that they're all in compliance, most of them. So it did make me feel better. So, there you go. We have time for Patty to get everybody ice cream, just saying.
Cow dung is that one.
I have a motion. I, I will make a motion if we adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion from Mary and a, and a second from Michael, even though it wasn't asked for. Meeting is adjourned.